Everybody good to go?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm going to call to order this city council budget workshop for July 11th, 2024. Do we have any visitors?
No, sir.
Ms. Ture Rice, do you want to start us off or Julie?
Kind of real quick, you know, I know we have a long meeting, so I'll be brief on this one. Just like anything else, we try to build in sustainability, trying to run relatively, I say lean budget. We've really charged our teams with diving into how do we make sure that we're taking our M and O and our maintenance operations and repair and, you know, repair and maintenance? And how do we start building in some cash that we can start preparing, you know, for the future? So with the theme of this year, beyond tomorrow, really what this buzzer presentation encompasses for the enterprise funds. And then I will turn it over to Julie entry.
I'll call then.
Sorry.
Julie.
Welcome, everyone. I know we've been waiting for this day totally. So, um, so we'll jump right in. I'm going to first, I mean, place at the table, Janelle Chapman is our new procurement coordinator. So we've done some realignment with staffing's not new position, just new to our department. And so she's going to be helping us navigate through some of the asset things as we do procurement and making sure that we're compliant there. So. So Janelle's here with us today.
So we'll jump in real quick. I won't go through all the preliminary things that we did the last time, but I did want to leave it in here for anyone who might not have been here last time, who might wanted to see that. But on the budget timeline, of course, on July 11th, so this will be our last large budget workshop. But of course, if there are questions or we need to meet offline or outside of this, we're happy to do that as we work through the last processes before we bring you a proposed budget. The next big thing really will be August 13th, when we'll bring you a resolution for a proposed tax rate, assuming that we get everything. We're hoping maybe we get a little bit early from Herkad, but at least by the 25th of July. So we'll be bringing that to you guys after we follow the budget. We'll skip through some of these. Again, Dalton talked about the theme.
And that's something we've really focused on. I mean, citywide, we've been really looking at that for a couple of years, but this year especially with the difference in the water fund and the things that we've seen change and just with the environment and drought, of course, just really looking at how do we move forward, but still sustain the system the way it needs to be sustained. And, you know, as many times as we say it over the past, since I've been doing this, the water system costs what the water system costs. And it doesn't matter how much water we're using, that maintenance still has to be done. So how do we do that, still be kind to our users, but also provide the kind of service that they, you know, need and require and deserve? So I want to look at a couple of economic trends with you because they do affect water a little bit different than they affect the general fund. And again, interest rates, I mean, this is no secret, and we've been looking at this graph as it changes over time for the last couple of years. But I think it's interesting as you look at the Fed and what it's done. Of course, they've been holding, if you've been following them since July, so no rate increases. We're actually expecting they will start decreasing at some point, but I don't really want to guess when, maybe this year sometime. But fun fact, December of 1980, the Fed rate was 20%. So we think we had it bad. My mother gave me a lecture the other day about how much they paid for their first house in interest.
I could do the same lesson.
You could, yeah.
Ask could I?
It's interesting when you look back that far and really look at, you know, 40, 50 year span of what the Fed has done. So they respond to what the environment is doing and what inflation is doing. And so their goal is really to push us back down into the 2% kind of inflationary rate. We're getting there. You know, we're down close to three, and you can kind of see over the past 12 months, and we talked about this going into the 24 budget, it's leveling, right? I mean, no, it's not going down in price, but at least it's not going up at the, at what we were seeing it. So on the next slide, it's really focused more on CPI, and we'll talk about pricing and those kinds of things. I put the arrows here so you could see kind of where we were from a CPI standpoint and also in fuel pricing as we were doing planning for each of these years. And so it really does have an impact, what's happening now, what happened before, and what we think's coming. And if you were here as we planned for the 23 budget, we really did some big increases in 23 because we were in the middle of that 9.1 inflation. And so 23 came back better than we anticipated, which is good because that leveling started happening there. 24 so far, you know, specifically on the general fund, but also on the water, we're seeing pricing stabilize, not necessarily going down, just not growing like it was. So yes, we're seeing the impact, but not so much of the unknown jumps to the 20, 30% in pricing you receive because the water fund is heavily impacted by petroleum-based products. And so everything we have in the ground, fuel in our vehicles, chemicals, everything. So it's impacted a little bit differently than the general fund because of different CPI, different areas we're looking at. So I just wanted to share that with you as we jump into the fun stuff. So as I was working on this summary yesterday, you know, you always get worried when you have to bring numbers to council, right? Nobody wants to say a million, you know, $16 million number, that's a scary number.
Carry that thought on. I want you to always be worried when you bring us numbers.
You want us to be worried? Okay. Well, I am, just so you know. I always am like, okay, let's think about how this message is going to sound. But I thought it was interesting that we went back, if you remember, in March of 23, we did a big water forecasting workshop on how we get where we get on water. And I put that in here because it surprised me, actually, and maybe smiled a little bit to go, look what we said in March of 23, we were going to need in the water fund for 25. And in March of 23, we said we're going to need 16, 339, 706. And when we did the proposed budget, it is 16, 386, 190. And so while that is a big number, it makes me happy to at least know that our forecasting models are working, the way that we kind of built them out, because we did spend a lot of time on that, doing multiple scenarios and looking at, you know, the future and what that's going to look like. And that was built as we were kind of leveling inflation and those kinds of things. So this shouldn't be a new number, even though it's a big number, we've seen it before. We've talked about all these things before, and so I hope there are not really any big surprises in here, but definitely a lot of room for conversation as we start talking about what are we going to do in the future.
So this budget does assume rate increases as we proposed again back in March of 23, a little bit different structurally, and we'll talk about that primarily because of water conservation. We utilized a water model that was much more conservative than we had done before, where we kind of used a stage one year-round water conservation for average consumption and just not including growth, so that we had some variable there. This year, we really took a different approach and said, no, we're using a super conservative, consider we're in stage three or better, and what does that consumption look like? And then how do we get there on these same revenues with different consumption? And what does that rate structure look like? So that's kind of the thing we worked through.
I don't want to interrupt you, but you say stage three or better? Do you mean stage three or greater?
Greater, I should say, worse, yes, or higher, or yes, sir, yes. So we kept our transfer to asset replacement equal to 2024, as we continue to talk about just doing better on taking care of our equipment and our tools going forward. The water fund, a little bit healthier than the general fund, but remember fewer assets as far as rolling stock and equipment. So a little bit different scenario there, so fewer dollars. And then we did keep a transfer in to CIP at 250, and really the idea there is just back to sustainability and putting some money aside for emergencies or things that happen in the future that we didn't plan on. If we don't need it, then we put it aside and we save it, and then we look at how we can use that as a lump sum total over multiple years to pay as you go, things that may come up in the future relating to our master plan, those things. So this fund did not have any new full-time position requests. Last year, we did add one position for half the year that at this point we have not filled, and they're holding on that right now just because of where the water fund is. We had eight vacancies out of 52 employees, so big vacancy rate on the water fund right now. Turnover has been a pretty big factor for us, so 15% employee vacancy really hurts when you're, you know, got guys in the field out there trying to do what they need to do.
Do you know the reason for the turnover?
It's just a nationwide problem, and I would like to say it's one particular thing, but I mean, if you look.
I mean, is it they're not happy with their salary, or they don't live here, or you don't?
Could be a little bit of it.
It's a factor, a lot of it. We were talking about it earlier today, you know, we heard something the other day, CDL driver for Walmart makes $100,000.
Oh, my gosh.
Right, so obviously, that's not something that we can pay rent, but we have folks who need to have CDL licenses because that's a state requirement. So we have to hire them, train them, get them certified. So this is the same conversation that police and fire, and it's similar to all the departments. Sometimes you just have these big swings, and there's a different opportunity. Oil and gas hits public works a lot, pretty hard, too, when it's moving.
And some of those things on how we've kind of, in the short term, you know, are starting to try to work to overcome that, you know, we made a couple of adjustments on, you know, light equipment operator versus heavy equipment based off certification. So we were able to pull the plug almost immediately on some of those to try to offset it. These are some of the things in any industry for entry-level type positions where we're going to plan for that turnover. It may be a consistent 15, 20%, but we're going to plan for that. We just have to figure out the pipeline. So this is where high school, you know, folks come in, this is where, you know, younger generation comes in. How do we build those pipelines? You say, we know we're going to lose you in a couple of years, and we're going to kind of invest in you, but we hope you come back at a certain point in time. And so we're just kind of planning for that.
And the, you know, Walmart drivers are making $100,000 a year, back to price increases, right? I mean, they have to pay them, so we then have, you know, and so it's affecting everyone. And, you know, I told someone the other day, the city doesn't get a discount just because we're the city, we're paying the same for supplies, you know, as everyone else. So it definitely does have an impact, those salary increases, which we'll talk about that in a minute.
The only really new thing that this fund requested was a new mower, and this is an additional mower for well sites, not a big expanse. And then water production, a relocation of a small chlorine treatment building that they have, that's something I believe they're going to do themselves, and then some backup radios for our SCADA system. So not any really huge requests on the operational side from this fund at all. So this next slide just kind of gives you, and I won't go through all of this, but I wanted you to kind of know, as we talk about different categories, what are we talking about? Like if I say personnel, it's not just salaries, but it's benefits, it's travel and training, it's everything that goes into the employee minus wearables and those kinds of things that will be considered supplies. So in this fund, you will see a smaller increase than you did in the general fund, primarily there's fewer employees, but also we've had some tenured employees that have retired, and so, you know, that brings your total salaries down. And with the turnover, we have, you know, people coming in at lower pay. So there's several factors there that you see an increase in personnel, but not as big as in the other funds. Supplies is going to be big things like chemicals, fuel, safety equipment, tools and equipment, those kinds of things. And then maintenance is really going to be anything from vehicles to water system maintenance, which is really our biggest expense in this fund, and wastewater collection system maintenance, we have that in this fund as well. So all those things are encompassed into maintenance. Services, that's electricity, utilities, those kinds of things, and we're seeing, you know, increases kind of across the board in there. So we're in some decreases and some increases as we go through here. So just wanted you to kind of know, as we talk about different categories, how these align a little bit differently in the water fund. Remember, the water fund is an enterprise fund, so this is a business that we operate like a business. And so our transfers out while removing money from the water fund to asset replacement. Asset replacement is still a component for financial reporting of the water fund, it's just that we do it into a different fund, so you can clearly see for transparency reasons, this is where we buy our large items out of. So it just makes it a little bit easier to see, it's a little bit easier to account for. Also, those items sometimes go multi-year, so it makes it easier to budget from one year to the next because we're not constantly having to re-budget for something maybe we didn't get and those kinds of things. So it just makes it a little simpler. Same thing with debt service, you know, our transfer always looks big, but remember that our debt service fund, while a separate fund, is still part of the water fund. We just show it separately so that you can see it clearly. So just wanted to make those notes.
You said debt service, not just for water?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, just for a water fund. We separate.
And so we went up quite a bit.
Debt service actually went down?
A little bit compared to this year.
Oh, that was just back to you.
Right, because you have.
Forgetting forecast.
Right, right. Because when we did this forecast, we were still in the very preliminary stages of whether or not we were going to issue new debt, so that was an estimation based on that time. But since then, we have issued those 2023 revenue bonds, so that payment actually will go down. So it's not a big decrease, but about $100,000 less in debt service overall. And I have a debt chart later that we'll show you. So first, look at preliminary expenses. I like to do it by category. This is kind of typically how we report it out monthly. Again, if there's something that isn't clear, or you want to see it a different way, we're happy to, you know, make modifications to this. This is just kind of the world we live in. I'd like to let you know by category how we're spending money. This gives you a percentage and a dollar for each of these categories. And then on the right, what you'll see is whether those categories are increased or decreased based on the 2024 budget that we're currently in. So again, 2.8% on personnel, that's small compared to what the general fund is, but there's a lot of factors that we talked about going in there. Of course, group insurance, we still don't know, so that number could still change a little bit, we hope, as Kim and her team go through that process. Supply increase, primarily, you know, we've started replacing two of the granular activated carbon filters every year at the water plant, and so those have gone up a little bit, but this will be our third year to do that, and that seems to be working well, that we're putting those in operations. And so again, we're seeing a level operating budget instead of the, we're doing this every third year and it's up and down. That includes those replacement radios we talked about and that new mower, so that's part of that increase there. A decrease on maintenance, a couple of reasons there. We had decrease in vehicle maintenance, and a lot of that is because we're doing a better job with asset replacement. So we don't have 2002 vehicles in the field as much, you know, we're down to replacing, I think, some from 2007 now, which is, you know, a good sign that we're making progress there. So we had a pretty substantial decrease there. Also, some realignment, as we just talked about purchasing, coming back into finance, realignment of some garage, which is also in that, the garage maintenance contract is also in that category. And so there's some fewer expenses there, but larger expenses on the other side because we transfer between funds to pay for the garage, it's an internal service fund.
Real quick on the maintenance, too, you know, when you see the decrease, sometimes we, when we talk about sustainability, why are we decreasing maintenance, right? One of the things that we've kind of, you know, charged our team with is taking in essence of capacity, taking a deep dive into all of our operations, everything that we're doing, peel the onion layer back on things that either, because we've always done it this way and we kind of needed to change the way we've done that, or maybe we were doing something that was something different. For example, mowing of the I-10 interchange, you know, as we dive into that a little bit more, we're able to kind of pull back on some of it. Also, on the administrative side, the budget side, instead of kind of preparing for the worst, we would rather run a very lean budget, where if we do have to redline it due to a maintenance issue or something, we would rather council see the red line in a very conservative number of saying, hey, this is, this is the reality of it, versus overdoing it too much and us never really hitting that or capturing that full line item. So very lean, so it's not taken away from maintenance, and as you see things that may be decreased in it, it's not taken away, we're just doing a deep dive into our operations.
Yeah, and that's a good point, because in 2023, for example, we replaced, I think, four well pumps in wells that went down to the tune of $40,000, $45,000 apiece. And so we had bumped that number up in '24 in anticipation of other emergency repairs. And then we've kind of just shifted things to say, if we have emergencies, that's what contingency is for, we're going to use that. And then also, as we talk about future building of facility fund and those kinds of things, as far as putting money away in different ways for things that are pop-up kind of things that we didn't anticipate and not really, I don't want to use the word padding, but adding money to a budget that we may not need. And so that's kind of the approach we took there. Increase in services, and that's going to be liability and auto increase primarily there, but also electricity that we're seeing some increases. And then capital, a little bit of a decrease there, but that's capital and other. So we have some things like dues and subscriptions and just some kind of one-off charges that staff have removed just because they're not utilizing certain things anymore. And then also contingencies in there, and we brought that down just a little bit, just based on what we've spent historically, but then also thinking about that emergency fund that we're talking about. And we'll talk about that a little bit later. So this next slide really kind of gives you the same categorical look, but I wanted to show you over history so that you can kind of see that there really is a consistent message to the water fund. So your expenses really don't change a whole lot. And while you see some jumps in personnel, we've talked about that over time, insurance has gotten crazy compared to what it was, you know, three years ago. And we've done some cost of living increases, some market adjustments that, you know, we've talked through over the past few years, which definitely you can see there. But if you look at the categorical things, where you see the increases really was in '23 there, when we really had those big increases with inflation. But outside of that, the water system is pretty constant, not necessarily in the dollar, but in the distribution of expenses year over year. So not a lot of give, I guess, is the point there when it comes to operating the system, regardless of how much water we use. So any questions on expenses? Like, y'all have anything specific categorically, or we don't have any really big, you know, thumbnail things that stick out, big ask, anything changing, things like that?
Can I go back to your summary page? I was just curious, it's not a big amount, but the development services goes from 23 to proposed 77,000.
Yes.
What, what cost?
I have a whole slide on development services that I want to talk to you about that more because there's some very real reasons for that.
I assumed it might be because pending future development.
It's really not, it's more about, so development services, I'm going to jump ahead, but it's short, but development services is part of the general fund. So again, that was one of those funds that we separated out, we didn't talk about it in the general fund workshop because we weren't there yet. But their revenues are very volatile, we don't know. And when we have, you know, development going on, then we make seed revenues. And when we don't have a lot of development going on, like this year, we're going to miss revenues. And so Drew and I really stepped back and said, what's realistic? Can you use historical, can you not? And you really can't because there's no driver really behind that other than what we know coming in the future. And so we took a super conservative approach to development services revenue so that we didn't have to have another big miss. They also had some expense reduction just based on some realignment of staffing and things like that. But because the, that the fund is supported in a percentage basis by the funds that it supports through its services, then the water fund and the general fund then pay for development services fund. And so because we reduced their revenues and their expense, they don't have a big budget anyway, it's like a little bit over a million dollars in total, they're, the portion went up, that's the reason for that.
Okay.
No, I knew that was going to be a question, and that, that's the answer, though. We just, we really brought revenues down.
I might be explaining, because I had a whole nother scenario in my head.
Okay.
When we get requests to waive permits and things.
Right, no, that's really not, it's really just more about, I mean, we're going to miss revenue budget in '24, and we know that. We've already exceeded revenue budget in '22, and if you go back historically, you have these big just ebbs and flows in what revenues do, and we just don't know. And so we just said, we're going to conserve it.
And with us doing more of kind of that hybrid zero-based budgeting, every year we start over, versus in the private sector, you'll do a Kearl-based accounting, we don't factor in that future growth. We're not factoring in, hey, an apartment complex is coming in, we're going to get a half a million in permit fees off of it. So we, we, those are kind of extra, cost of doing business, cost of services, but we do not accrue for those over time in preparation for that.
And a lot of times, those big projects, too, will have an offsetting expense if we have to outsource some things. So it's really hard to say, yeah, we're going to get half a million dollars, but how much of that are we going to have to spend to offset that revenue if we're doing outsourcing of certain reviews on large projects?
Yeah, a lot of pass-through costs on the development side. One other thing on the expenses, too, kind of towards developmental services, but more for the water fund in general, this also does not factor in Julie and her team's work on the credit card merchant fees. So this still factors in that expenses, water fund about 140,000, developmental services about 25,000, general fund about 60. So this still factors in that we are covering it until the team can get the, all the information and make sure our teams are trained up on what that looks like going forward. So that's still accounted for in the expense sheet.
Yes, there's a lot of moving parts on that still, so that's something we're.
So October 1st is kind of our shoot, our effective date.
Right, right. And more to come on that, is that's going to be a pretty big, we're going to have to work through some stuff. We need to get through budget, and then we'll, then we'll shift gears and start, we want to make sure we do that correctly.
Yes, sir.
Did you mention that Sophie have some money you didn't spend in one account, you move it to another, or did I misunderstand?
We can within a fund. So let's say, for example, that I have water system maintenance in my department, and I have another expense over here that this line item is going to go over. I can move that, they have to have either my approval or Dalton's approval, they can move money around within their department or within a fund. We can move money between a fund. I can't move money myself, Dalton can't move money from the general fund to water fund or vice versa without council approval.
So best way to describe it is budget adjustment within the department, division. Budget amendment changes the bottom line, council.
Right, yes. We can't affect the bottom line, that's the best way to describe it.
We cannot affect the bottom line.
Because when you're budgeting in February for office supplies, you may not know by September of the following year what's really going to happen. So we can move money within our apartments from one line to the other if we need to, just to, you know, cover additional expense.
I had some conversation with you about how do we compare efficiency from one year to the next? And how do we, I mean, what are we, or how are we setting up so that if we can't this year, that we are set up to do it next year?
Yeah, so one of the things, and when we talk about budget adjustments, you know, per se, that's to me where I'm big on red lines, where if we have a supply budget and, you know, every year we bring to council, you know, on that, we are not moving or changing the accounting side of it. So if we have pens and I'm going to redline this budget or this line item, I'm not splitting that cost over another one to make them look clean.
That's right.
We are redlining that supply line so we, over time, can see that, hey, we need to increase the supply budget for pens.
And even in.
And that's, sometimes it's different, every city does things differently. That's, that's kind of Julie and my approach on this. We would rather y'all see the good, the bad, and the ugly for the sake of efficiency, and so y'all can actually see the real trends that are happening.
And we do make those.
That hasn't always been the case.
Yeah, I'm not sure I understand, though, that's addressing what I'm asking.
Yeah, so when I say hybrid zero-based budgeting, you know, if we do $10,000 a year in supplies, we're going to look at the actuals, we're going to look at the budget, and then we will adjust that going into the next year since we're starting over. And we factor it in. So we don't just, we don't just plug and play everything across the board, we look at the historicals year over year of budget versus actual.
Okay, so, you know, and I guess in businesses, we would take those line items and we'd have a percentage of the total expenses for each category, for example, and year to year to year to year. And you just have column, 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 and you say, well, then supplies was X percent, X percent. Is it getting better, getting worse, or are we managing that, or we?
And we do have that.
And so that would be good to see.
Okay. Yeah, and we absolutely can share that when we, you know, for those who want the line item or the, or even just the high-level categories of percentages, we absolutely can do that. It can get overwhelming very quick unless you're, you know, very familiar with, you know, looking at those. So whatever you guys want on that, we absolutely can share that, because it can get.
Yes.
Yeah, because it can get, it can get bogged down, it can get overwhelming really quickly.
I would like to see it as well.
Okay.
We can look at that by subcategory, might be a better way to look at that than by line item, we're talking about literally thousands, but a subcategory is going to break it down.
Yeah, the subcategory kind of breaks it down into that personnel, supplies, you know, high level, so we can, we can definitely provide that.
Right, so we take your personnel, for example, and say, what's salaries, what's benefits, what's travel and training, instead of every single surpay and longevity.
There's an issue that kind of pops up, then you can get in the week.
Sure, and we do that, yeah, we do that on our side, but we're happy to share that. We look at that regularly. And also, when we move money from one line to the other, even within a department, it doesn't change the original budget, so you can always see what the original was and you can always see what the ending is. And so we do those comparisons that you're into to say, what do they start with?
I don't really care about what the budget's changed, I just wanted to know what the actuals changed.
Right. And that's where that current budget comes into play. Because once we change it, that's the actual thing. Yeah, we can definitely do that.
Detail guy. I like it.
No, it's the problem about being a banker.
I mean, that's fine. That's the information we need. We don't know, we can't provide it. So I'm going to, any other questions before we move on from expenses? So I'm gonna turn the next section over to Trina primarily because she's our in-house water model data analytical. You don't even wanna know all the information that she's spent over the past few months. And she really kind of gave you an overview of what the approach was to modeling and distribution of revenues and those kind of things. And so I'm gonna turn it over to her.
Great. So fiscal year '25 is proposing a $16.386 million budget. That is approximately 5% over fiscal year '24. And that is based on our water forecast model that we built back in March of '23. So we're right in line of where we were wanting to go. So with the water fund, we have multiple types of water revenue that we produce. That's water cells, sewer cells, waste disposal. That is, you know, haulers who do septic disposal. They take it out to the water treatment plant and dispose of it, and there's a cost to them. We have some inside-city limits and some outside-city limit customers. And we do have reuse cells where folks can go pick up reused water for irrigation or their farmland or whatnot. We also, a lot of construction companies go pick up to develop the land, clean it up, dust control, all that. So we do have multiple sources of water revenues, not just the utility billing customers. And of course, all the other little customer service fees and miscellaneous stuff. So majority of our revenue is 97% consumption-based, and y'all know that. Basically, the citizens and the use of their water, their domestic use, their irrigation use, and then the cleaning of all that water is the sewer.
This year's budget is kind of, we've kind of did a balancing act, kind of. We shifted, as you can see, fiscal year '24, 49% of water revenues made up the budget, and then 44% was sewer. Well, it's shifted a little bit. Sewer is a more dependable, stable revenue source for us, and we've kind of adjusted our model to help sustain where we're trying to go. So this year's sewer '25 proposal is 46% on water and 46% on sewer. So you can see the shift from 49 to 46 on the water, and sewer went up a couple of places.
So you're saying you're getting more revenue from sewer than...
Correct, sir.
And that'll kind of get cleared up as we kind of go through this, so just keep that in the back of your mind. Where we've shifted away from on the consumption piece, we talked about a little bit on the irrigation side. Those scenarios will come into play here in a little bit.
I have a question about reuse, just out of curiosity. So that comes from the pond on Spur 100?
Yes.
So before we had that pond, we didn't have the ability to sell reused water. So I would think it'd even be more than $175,000. But how much would an average user pay? I'm just curious.
That is $17.50 per load, up to 3,000 gallons. And I wanna say it goes up a little bit after that, $21, I believe. And we have majority, those are folks who do have the reused utility billing accounts. They are on contracts set at a standard, the rate built into the contract. Those contracts are coming up for expiration, I believe, in fiscal year '25. So we were looking at adjusting those.
How many of those contracts do we have right now?
We have three, four.
She's talking about the big ones.
The big ones, yeah.
And the very first one that came online was before I was here, I think was Comanche. And that one's gonna be one of the first ones that we'll be renewing. And so that'll be, those contracts will be coming back to us for consideration pricing.
Well, they shouldn't go up. Well, the rate probably...
That'll be council's purview, really, on how we renew those contracts. And I think the initial thought was, they had such a large infrastructure cost on their side. We were trying to, you know...
Lessen the burden of...
Well, because we're using 300 million gallons of reused water, which is really offsetting what they would have been irrigating otherwise. And so it was a win for the city, but there was a huge cost to them. And so I think that's why the cost was low at the time. And again, I wasn't here at the time, but that would be my common sense answer to that. But those are expiring, and so those will be coming back. So those prices will be...
If it's council's purview to evaluate some scenarios and, you know, look at that just for y'all's knowledge on the best stuff, we can't put some of that together at a later date or when those start coming up.
It just makes me feel good to know that. That was such a contentious plan to build that pond. There was so much blowback about it that it was like, and now I see the fruits of the labor and the positives that came in that. So really, it makes me feel good.
Remind us how much that pond costs. Contracts are gonna renew next year.
Right.
There's about six of them, and we were selling reused water before the pond. We didn't have the volume that we have now to sell. So we've been selling reused water since Kerbal had Scotch Shrinner Golf Course is when that reuse system was put in. So it's been a while, but now we have a large volume that's way more sustainable to sell. And some of those contracts are tied to different things. It's not gonna be real clean. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a bit of a struggle. They are, some of them are getting close to coming out for evaluation. Some of them are coming by their contracts.
Right.
Can you remind us how much the reuse pond cost?
It was 12 million.
28 million?
26 million, I think it was, 26, 90.
That's a pretty bad return on investment.
There's all different pieces. I say that tongue-in-cheek because some people include engineering. Some people want it right off the dirt that we built it on. Some people want it to cost just the construction cost. There are all different ways to look at it. Around $20 million.
But then, you have to consider what we're saving in water.
That's right.
Because we're watering reespace with it now, which where we weren't before.
Yeah, but you think it could pay for itself.
Well, and so this kind of goes back to where, you know, and you can't always quantify ROI. You know, in the sense, you know, that's 200 to 300 million gallons a year less of potable water that we're kind of doing it. So there's a cost of conservation, unfortunately. This is kind of one of those things where there is a cost of conservation. Again, we can look at some of the numbers, but it'll probably never pay for itself necessarily. Now, that being said, and this is not necessarily a conversation for now, but the future of water is also reuse. This is the beginning stages of where the future of water unfortunately is going, you know, in the next five to 10 years. Yeah, and so, yeah, so right now, this is just the beginning stages. So to your point, the ROI is terrible, but can't quantify sometimes the ROI based off of potable water.
So it was determined during the study.
It's the governance side of things. So when we're looking at it from, not from a business, you know, side, it's more from the service industry side, the service model side. Because just like, you know, parks, just like public safety to a certain extent, there is no ROI. They are loss leaders, you know, within the industry. And so that's kind of where we can't, sometimes we can't always look at it through the business lens. So on the things that we can look at it through a business lens, we absolutely want to. We wanna, you know, take that approach. Our teams, even on the loss leader side, have done a great job at looking at their business models on how do we qualify some of these things more to, you know, to offset some expenses or, you know, reduce some of that cost. So that's just one of the unfortunate sides of the...
Mr. Barron?
Yeah, but I think fees could go up on those.
We can definitely look at that.
Some can.
Mr. Barron?
So I was hoping on that to the February, y'all wouldn't have to hear me talk. Like usually, I can't keep my mouth shut. So the reason for that pond, they never, they looked at the ROI, and they said, this is one of the worst projects we can think of to do because it's not gonna dollar out. However, there was a component in there that we saved 500,000 gallons a day of reused water to use as potable water. Now, we're not to that point yet where we're gonna build a water treatment plant like Mr. Dalton said. But having a really reliable source of water was thought to be very, very valuable in the future. And so we didn't look at the return on investment as a reuse side, but more of a potable water source in the future. And that's where it really made sense. Because if we were to discharge that water into the river, we lost control of it at the state level. But if we held it, then it's our water to do anything we want with. And so that's where it made sense to do that. So if you look at it just from a dollars and cents, you're gonna get really aggravated with the project and say, this... Everybody's right. It wasn't a good idea. However, if this drought continues for the next five or 10 years, you're gonna look at and say, man, those guys, they were on...
We were on our game.
So it depends on how you look at it.
Still can do a better job of recovering. I mean, there was so great cheap to water so...
Yeah, no, we can definitely reevaluate those. Going into that deep dive we were talking about, these are the things that we're looking at of saying, does this make sense? And are we at the right place? Obviously, some of these contracts are, you know, long contracts. And so now that, as they start to roll off, we can start reevaluating all of these.
You good?
Yes. So looking at revenues, and we're, the majority of this is focused around our utility billing customers, the ones that we build on. But our current rate structure, we're a lot, we've done some analysis, we've done some research. We are a lot lower than of some of our surrounding cities. And we take our surrounding cities because they have the same topography and geographic location as we do and some of the same hurdles, I guess. So it's kind of difficult to do apples-to-apples comparison because some people treat their own water, some have pipelines that bring in water. We have, you know, just different scenarios. But here for the city, we treat our own water and wastewater. It is a very diverse water source, and we have mini lift stations and just, you know, a lot of infrastructure needs that we have because of where we're at. And again, 97% of our water fund revenues are consumption-based, so that is a huge factor in revenues. It is industry standard to use a variable rate structure, meaning you have a base rate for your utility customers, and then you have a tiered rate. So the base rate is, they're gonna pay that regardless. That's to have an open potable resource available to them, and then they will pay for the consumption on a tiered scale. The higher water consumption you have, the higher tiered rate you will pay. And it's not all at once. It grows as you use more. Our irrigation rate customers, they pay a higher rate automatically because they're using potable water source to put into the ground. We did change our residential tiered structure a couple of years back in '22, I believe.
2020, I think.
2020? Oh, yeah. So we, it's mainly for the more the one-person household, single citizen, using less than 1,000 gallons a month. They simply get the first 1,000 gallons in their base rate they pay. So if they use less than that each month, they're paying the base rate on the water and the base rate on the sewer, and that's pretty much it. Right now, our irrigation typically accounts for about 30% of our overall revenues. So that's a good amount of folks. But the weather conditions and drought conservation schedules, they impact that heavily. So right now, we are, this is the year to look at that. This is what's going on this year. Again, as Julie said, our operational needs of our system are the same regardless of how much water we are selling. We have the same operational cost. So we are looking at changing up our structure a little bit just to make sure we are sustainable and can fulfill all those operational needs. Right now, our base rate makes approximately 34% of our revenue, our overall water revenue. That's approximately $2.3 million. Right now, our consumption is down about 11% over fiscal year '23, and that is mainly because of the drought conditions we've been in. August of '24 went to stage four. November, we would drop down to stage two, but then here in May, we went back up to stage three. So it has heavily affected the irrigation customers. And then you can see irrigation consumption is down about 25%. So in the future slides, I'll show you what we consider irrigation, how many parts of our different categories. We have residential, commercial, irrigation customers, obviously, fire hydrants, and then we have some reuse customers. So there's a little bit in each category that we consider irrigators. On the sewer side of our revenues, we, right now, our base rate makes up about 30% of our overall revenue, and that's approximately $2 million on the sewer side of the revenues. That is a much more stable revenue source because we have residential sewer averaging. So basically, we take the winter months, December, January, and February. We get an average of that household domestic use. And then we set their sewer average, that amount in April, and it stays the same all year long. So that amount they pay on their bill is the same each month. So that's more dependable than up and down depending on how much consumption they use month over month.
I have a question about that. Okay, you're taking an average. But what happens when they, say, deliberately decrease during those months to get that rate? But then it's over the top during the...
And we do have some of those customers.
Yes.
You know, it's hard to distinguish because it is wintertime. It's dormant. Nobody really is watering. I mean, you have some, but most folks are not.
Have we considered doing that average in a different month?
The idea is to do it when people aren't watering because water that's going into the ground isn't having to be treated. So if it's not being treated, then it's not going back into the sewer system. So it's a different cost to us as far as treating. It's a lot more if they are a higher user on the water that is going into the sewer system because now we're having to treat that water. So that's the idea about basing their sewer cost on a lower usage month, those lower uses month, because they're not using it.
It would be really hard for people to cut it down, your average regular taking a shower and washing clothes, down to a level, in my opinion, that would affect your sewer bill that much. It's gonna be watering. Now, we have people that, you know, will say, hey, I've gotta fill my pool. And they'll do that, but they let us know ahead of time. And so we'll go out there and get a read on their meter. We'll watch it. We'll look at it, and we'll make sure they actually did fill their pool. It's not going into the service system, they're watering grass, things like that. So we work with people on a regular basis for all kinds of odd reasons that you might not think of that we have to work with them on.
I just always wondered why that average was done during those months and not in the months when watering is really, really hot.
Because we're not treating the water that's going in the ground on the grass. So it's not increasing what we have to spend on our treatment, if that makes sense. Is that a decent assumption?
Good question, ma'am.
But that's the reason. And that is pretty standard on the residential side.
That would be, there would be really high sewer rates for the customers if they did have that true household consumption that is going down, the sludge going into the pipes. If we did take the higher months.
And we're not treating them, and so if we don't treat it, then we don't build that.
Because literally, I mean, I have a friend who says, okay, you know, we gotta watch it. Because you're doing the average.
Yes.
And this is a different town, same story. Everybody else is the same scenario. That's how we, that's how everybody does it.
Okay.
There's always, there's always something.
There's a joke in there somewhere.
Yeah, there is.
Jacob had one yesterday. They said they've only showered once this week, and they have done no laundry at the house.
They get a lot of good stories.
Just come on over for the lie.
Yeah, we can provide some stuff.
So there's some room for the water rates to go up compared to what other cities are doing.
Those scenarios are coming.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, those are definitely coming.
This year?
That's purview of council, but we have three scenarios that we'll present.
Yes, sir. So this here is a graph, a glimpse of water consumption this year compared to a three-year average. And I hope this doesn't confuse you. So in finance, we are looking at today and now, the month of June, and then we compare it to historicals. So this graph starts June and goes back. But we flagged the days, the times, we went into different drought stage conditions. And at the top here, you see, it's all your data, basically comparing fiscal year '24 numbers to the last three-year average. And it's just showing you, month over month, the deficit we've had compared to the average. But overall, it's, we're down 11% on consumption.
That's interesting. That's a big difference, too.
Is it drought?
This is the number, I'm sorry, this number here versus 170,000.
Yeah, she's gonna show you some bigger numbers.
I had another question about this, too. In the stage four of August of '23, we used more water than we've ever used. Is that right?
It was August.
The column is the highest column there. I thought that was kind of, if that's what I'm reading as.
I'm sorry. In August, we used more than we've used...
Well, the blue column is the highest, and it goes up to almost 125 million, I guess is the right aggregate. So I was wondering why that we may have, that might have happened.
So we were in stage one year-round in 2023, so they were able to irrigate...
In '23, we were?
Yes, sure. Up till August of '23, we were in year-round conservation, just stage one.
So when do we go?
At the end of August, we went to stage three.
Right.
So that wouldn't take effect, that August usage, well, it was August 24, so maybe one more week in August, did it really affect? Those billings would go out in October.
A lot of irrigation.
Yes.
You're not gonna see the impact.
Stage four would have occurred that little bit.
It did, but in 2023, we didn't go into it until very late. And that was before my time, but that was when everything was unfolding.
And it takes a little while to see the impact. Because by the time you roll that out, by the time people know, by the time people adjust, all those kind of things. And remember, we build a month behind.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, this...
These are a lot of numbers, but Trina's gonna make this one simple.
A lot of numbers, yes, but very simple. So this is, what we're depicting here is truly irrigation usage. Your yellow chart here is fiscal year '23's numbers and where we ended at, and then where we're at, where we estimate to end at in '24 on the tilled blue here. So again, irrigation makes up 30, approximately 30% of our revenues. And you can see...
I'm sorry, say that again. So the yellow, it says estimates, but is these your actuals?
Yes, we did use, we ended fiscal year '23 to the tune of $50,000 difference on this. So it is the '23 estimations, but it's pretty close to our actuals.
She was comparing to the water model she used last year.
Yes, sir.
So that, so you were looking at, what did we, what did we use last year to build out revenues compared to what we built up this year? Because we were mid-year, you know, we have to estimate those last few months. So we didn't wanna skew it by, we wanted to say, this is what we did last year compared to what this would be this year.
'23 estimations compared to '24 estimations. But I can assure you...
I don't, I'm not interested in estimations.
Well, but otherwise, your model, if you're saying we built the budget or the revenues based on this model, this is the way the model has changed since we did it from then. So if you looked at it, and we went back and looked at it, it was immaterial, the difference, so... No, I know what you're saying, but there was...
We might not have all the months in the year.
No, you do have all the months.
We got lots of the months of the year, right?
You have...
The only, the only ones that are estimated are the last couple of months.
Yes. This is through June of '23.
Yes, not at all.
We were within $50,000. That's why, to go through this iteration, again, to get you to that, you know, $50,000.
We're estimating through October 1. And so that's, that was the side-by-side comparison. All of it's actuals for 2023 up until the point where, basically, budget time. Then those are the estimates, and then everything for '24. And then everything for twenty-four is all estimates, using all of the actuals.
From last year.
From last year, less the last couple of months that are our estimates. So, it's just showing the comparison of every, to your point, everything is actuals on here minus the last couple of months.
Okay.
But we can, if y'all want, we can put the previous year's actuals. You know, we do the, we'll do the side-by-side comparison on it to see how close we are. And we can use those actuals, but we can take a look at that if we need to.
Yeah, and we looked at the totals, and it was just immaterial to going through the exercise of this. And really, what we were trying to say is this is the model we use to build out. This, and this is the model we're proposing to use to build out in this one. And just showing the change of the model because you have to, you have to have a starting point to be able to...
But the models are based on different consumptions.
That's right. That's the whole idea.
But you're saying, you're changing the consumption and the model of billing both?
This is, this is actually what has happened. We haven't gotten yet to, when we show you some scenarios, that will be based on the same consumption, the same tiered rates, same everything. These are estimations of where we expect it to end twenty-three and where we expect it to end twenty-four. And just to show you the true comparison.
We already finished twenty-three, so we have that, right?
Yes, we built this model the same time last year, and we're comparing it to the model we built the same time this year to show you that we built, we're building the model on different consumptions, basically.
Last year, we built it on the consumptions based on the assumptions we had for those last couple of months. This year, we're saying this model looks different than the model we used last year.
I know where you're getting at.
Yeah, me, too.
Yeah, I'm absolutely baffled.
No, we can, we can, we can...
We could fill in the last three months and bring you back actuals.
You would prefer to see the FY twenty-three actuals compared to the FY twenty-four estimations.
If we can do that, it's going to be really simple.
Well, it's just a habit, you know? We don't want to be looking at, well, this was last year's budget, this is this year's budget. And we, and we don't, I don't care about last year's budget. That's over with, you know? How did it actually turn out?
Yeah, the, yeah, the budget versus actuals in the comparison of that, so we look at both, both sides. What's the budget versus actual? How close were we, which is what, you know, this shows? And then, yes, the actual side compared to what we're, so yes, no, I understand what you're, what you're getting at.
So, so, twenty-three is, of course, your calendar year is different. So, we're talking about, these are not calendar year, these are fiscal years.
And we're basically just trying to validate the model and say, okay, this is the model that we used, and this is how we're changing the model.
Yeah, and if y'all prefer to not, not care about the models, we can do the actuals or estimations.
We're just trying to, I think, walk through, like, what was the thinking as we...
Yeah, we're...
Okay, so we're just evaluating the model, not the...
That's right.
Correct.
Okay, so what's the change in the model?
That's where we're...
So, what we're reflecting here is the irrigation consumption. We are showing that it is down twenty-five percent compared to fiscal year twenty-three. And that's approximately a hundred and twenty million gallons that equates approximately six hundred and eight thousand dollars in revenue. And that's about where we think we're going to miss this year. So, it's our irrigating customers that are affecting where we're at. And irrigation is super volatile due to weather conditions, drought stages. So, we want to change our focus and gear it towards some base rate changes. That's really what we're trying to depict here is just showing consumption fiscal year twenty-three versus twenty-four and all the variables we've had to deal with and how it affects the bottom line.
So, you think we can make it with rate increases?
We're going to try and see what we can do.
So, bottom line of this page, what am I looking for here that is the difference?
So, if you look at the highlighted areas, so if you look at, for example, on the...
Those three, those three rows, yellow and the blue, so where are those?
So, all your highlighted areas on the yellow and the blue, those are the customers we consider that are irrigating. So, typically, like I said, we average about two thousand, twenty-five hundred per person in the household. If you have a five-person household, that's approximately twelve thousand gallons. So, if you're using fifteen thousand gallons plus, more than likely, you're irrigating your lawn or doing some excess stuff outside. So, residential is highlighted there. Irrigation is obvious. We chime back on the commercial because they tend to have a higher usage just to operate their restaurants or their hotels, you know? So, and those are all different, just depending on what kind of business they have. So, we kind of took that out of the picture. But straight-up irrigation, fire hydrant customers, they're putting it outside on the, on the ground. So, those are the tiers that we pick to be true irrigation consumption.
So, it's these boxes at the bottom where you total things up.
Right. Yes, sir. So, twenty-three, four hundred and ninety-one million gallons compared to the overall consumption is forty-two percent in twenty-three. You go to the right, the three hundred and seventy million gallons over the overall consumption is thirty-five percent. So, it has decreased.
Is there a reason why?
Good drought conditions, yes.
So, the twenty-four, then, we were thirty-five percent, that's thirty-five percent of the consumption. And then the build part...
Show this.
Sorry.
It's twenty-nine percent.
Yes, sir.
Why would, it seems like that should be a higher percentage?
We're using much less, lower consumption, and it's going to be lower dollars if we have a revenue miss.
But this is just the irrigation part?
Correct.
But so, we're, so...
What we're trying to do is say, if we reduce the amount of revenue we depend on from irrigation consumption, then what does that do to our overall revenue of the fund? And how do we still meet those revenues?
Using the same customers in a different structure, basically.
You're assuming that we're going to have a hundred and twenty-one million gallons less used for irrigation in this upcoming. Largely because of the drought, but there may be other reasons as well.
Yeah, conservation, too. I mean, the messaging's been out there.
Yeah, and people are changing their laws.
And these are actuals through our last billing cycle.
People are changing their laws to more Peter escape.
And one thing we can maybe look at, you know, to get to your point, you know, on the model, to model versus the actuals, maybe let's look at a rolling five-year actuals and see what that would factor in, you know, because that would factor in all the different variables without diving too far into the weeds on it, and see how close that would give us to our forecasting models.
Yeah. The reason I think twenty-four matters so much is the reduction in irrigation. Because, you know, that has, we've always relied heavily on that piece for revenue. And so, we're looking at the twenty-four and the more stringent water conservation stages that we have in place really reduce that. And so, if you take that into consideration when you're forecasting what revenue would look like if you didn't have that, then how do you still get to the revenue without that irrigation?
And this kind of segues into these next steps, right? So, to the point of the ROI discussion, we're relying very heavily thirty percent on irrigation, which is a, something that varies drastically. And so, how do we cover our costs, our rate of return on our infrastructure and everything else that is there no matter what? How do we adjust off of that, off the regular, everyday users to have a more stabilized outcome? Where we're not taking away from irrigation, we're just now turning that into more of a known variable that we could put into CIP. We can offset certain things, you know, we can dump in infrastructure, capital projects, fixed assets. So, we're trying to use more of that piece as, as, knowing that it's variable to use for other things and use the more of the base rate and the tiered rate as the more stable.
So, this reduction of a hundred and twenty-one million gallons is not helping us cover our fixed costs as much as we...
Correct. And as soon as we have a bad year, if we factor that thirty percent in...
There are variable costs, obviously, but the fixed costs are the problem.
And we're trying to basically put the fixed cost to the fixed cost and the variable cost with the variable cost and separate the two for...
And we got to set aside some money because, you know, we got to...
Absolutely.
We got to drill more well. We got to do more.
And that's pretty much what we're trying to use irrigation for as, hey, it's a nice-to-have that we can use for future stuff on top of the stuff that we're also setting aside in the fixed costs.
So, like in twenty, for twenty-four's budget, we use that, you know, four hundred and ninety-two million gallons of consumption. And what we're saying is for twenty-five, we're going to use that three hundred and seventy-one million gallons.
That difference of about a hundred and ninety-two million.
We're just using less revenue from that.
Or more that's in the reuse pond today.
That's right.
The reuse pond holds about ninety-nine million gallons.
How much?
So, it's a, you could fill it up and make it go over the sides, and still would be visual of how much we've reduced the irrigation during this drought, our consumers.
That's a good point. I hadn't thought about it that way, but that's exactly right. About a hundred, a hundred and twenty million, and that is through our last billing cycle. So, we got close to actuals as we put it.
We're having changes in consumer behavior based on the weather and possibly the cost. And we're trying to figure out how to cover our fixed costs based on that new consumer behavior.
And maybe not even consumer behavior, just with the weather conditions that have been presented. You know, the higher drought stages we have, the less they buy our ordinances, they can irrigate.
And I won't lie or note it, I'm not riding my grass as much anymore because I don't have any grass anymore.
And so, yeah, so it's kind of consumer behavior and kind of just the drought stages that we've been, we've dealt. So, we're trying to factor in now, again, taking the variable out, what's more stable every year? People are showering. People are, you know, washing their clothes. That ultimately, over time, less the new development that you can't really quantify, that needs to cover the cost of the infrastructure, at least.
Future repairs to say.
And the future repairs.
Future expansion of something.
And that's where, and that's the segue into the regional comparison rates and the scenarios.
And your point is good on the, you don't have any grass to water because oddly enough, it wouldn't seem this way. But when it rains a little bit and things start to get green, people water more. And so, it's not a way, they water less when it rains. They actually water more because it greens up. It gets pretty. So, we see that trend also.
I haven't seen it in a while.
Yeah, kind of right. We see some weeds popping up.
Like, whoa, what is this?
Okay, I'm going into New Gen, went back to New Gen when we did our rate study with in two thousand and nineteen. So, you just get our comparison data for us for this exercise. Looking at, what you're looking at is the water-only base rate. And right now, Curville is sitting fourth in line from the bottom on the base rate compared to the regional cities. And again, we would like to gear towards increasing that base rate to have a more steady revenue stream. Some of these cities, I like to compare debt comparison cities. Obviously, they issue debt for their infrastructure costs, but not everybody has the same infrastructure cost. So, that may not be the same comparison either. But these, this, for this exercise, this is our nearby cities.
How is it that San Antonio is nine dollars, though?
They have a lot, larger customer base.
So, we didn't, we didn't want to busy the slide up with population, but we do have the talking points of population for these things, for that comparison.
That leaves us a lot more users, more shared costs.
So, to, so to that point...
A lot more infrastructure.
A lot more infrastructure. And, and so, like, for example, like the landing or, you know, Holdsworth, you know, where you can't really necessarily factor in the repair and maintenance side of it. But by having users on the system, you're able to, in a way, dilute, I guess, pun intended, you know, dilute the system with customers, which then keeps that customer base low. Less consumers, the more you're still having to cover that infrastructure cost for the rate, you know, ROI. More consumers you have, less rate covers the cost.
Until you run out of capacity.
Until you run out of capacity. And so, then that's where the future growth comes in and debt and rates and everything else. So, we're trying to now get it to where those things are getting caught up to balancing that ROI as well as preparing for the future.
And as a previous SaaS customer, I can tell you there's a lot of fees stacked on that.
Is that right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, this is the, yeah, that's a good point. This is just the base rate, not the tiered rates included in this. This is just what you pay, so, yeah. Good, good point.
Okay, next slide here is the residential base rate for the sewer. Curville, again, is fourth in line from the bottom. We currently, maybe inside things you didn't know, but we have, when we have a new citizen come in and want to start a new account, we have no history on them. So, we typically just bill them a sewer charge on four thousand gallons. That's been the same since I've been around. And we are actually looking to that this year because our true sewer average this year dropped down from fifty-three hundred gallons to five thousand gallons. So, we are considering increasing that up to a five thousand gallon range. So, that's going to help out a little bit for, for what we're trying to do here. But just wanted to point that out. Next slide. So, New Gen took a fifty-eight hundred gallon consumption average in their study and to see where's Curville, where Curville is on the map with a combined water and sewer charge with the tiered rates included. So, we would be third in line from, for the other comparison cities. And something else to point out, I told Julie, so when we take our wintering average, that amount stays the same all year. So, for me personally, I don't water in the, in the winter months. So, my sewer average is approximately seven thousand gallons. I have five people in my home. But when I do water, my consumption may be ten thousand gallons. So, I am paying a sewer based on the seven thousand gallon average. My water fees are based on the actual ten and eleven thousand gallons I use. So, then, this is not a true, what a true bill would be. Most people have a set sewer average, and then they are billed on the actual water they use month over month. So, but this would just, this is just for illustration purposes, what it would cost for fifty-eight hundred gallons of water and fifty-eight hundred gallons of sewer to be treated.
I think it's important to note from the operational side, too, that Curville has a lot more robust system than most of these other providers that we're looking at. Nobody else except for possibly San Antonio, but they don't source surface water. They store groundwater in different aquifers. Our system is a lot more difficult to operate than a lot of these are because of the hills that we have, the twenty-eight lift stations, three, six different pressure planes, water treatment plant, wastewater plant, ASR system. And so, as you look through here, it's not just dollars. It's not just how much are they charging versus, you got to also look at the amount of effort that goes into supplying that gallon of water. For lots of these places, we, we have a lot more limited resource of water than they do.
Yes.
And we should be higher than most of these.
And some of them are actually piping water in from other areas when we were looking at things. Someone just built a multi-mile pipeline. I think it was Kyle. Oh, Flugerville?
Everybody's moving that way. I mean, there's...
They're building pipelines to get water in.
They get a hell of a lot more rain than we do.
Just more people, I guess. But they're, yeah, they're changing the way they're doing it.
You think with more people, we're talking about them being more efficient.
You would think.
They're not more efficient. Georgetown's forty-nine dollars, and they got, they got a hell of a lot more rain than we get.
A thirty-five quarter or gets it all, it seems like, every time it rains. There's no grumples.
You know, I just think it's important to note that, you know, I've lived in the same house for thirty years and raised four children in that house. And my water bill from then until now, with all the infrastructure stuff that has been done, has virtually stayed the same for the last thirty years. I've gone from really about sixty-nine dollars to eighty-three, to eighty-three dollars.
We should rent your charge, Tony.
Do you bathe all the kids?
No, no. So, I mean, I just, it's astounding to me that our water, that the water that we're paying for is so low.
And we have, you know, people here during, when we did the rate study, the recommendation was to make some big jumps. And, you know, we didn't recommend those, of course, at the time. We were going into COVID, and a lot of other things were going on, and we were pretty conservative on those initially. And then we had another year during COVID, we did no rate increases. And so, we've been very conservative, and we always take a look at, how's this impact the citizen? Because honestly, that, when Trina and I are talking about, that's the first thing we think about is, you know, we're, we're customer-facing. So, we see those customers every day. We have a relationship with those customers. And, you know, we pay bills, too. So, how, what's the impact to the customer? We're always thinking about that. But the fact of the matter is, when you work through expenses, and I can tell you from the general fund and the water side, they're conservative. I mean, people are being very conservative as they're budgeting for their departments. They're doing what they have to do and letting us budget contingency. And we really tried to get them to do that to see what's the real picture. And we just don't have a lot to give when it comes to expenses. So, how do you do that with the most minimal impact to the customer? But at the end of the day, we want the water to turn on when we turn on the faucet. I mean, and whatever Stuart and his guys have to do to get there, you know, that is what it is regardless of we're using a hundred and twenty million gallons or a hundred gallons, you know?
So, how long has it been since we changed the base rate?
We changed it last year slightly.
Very little.
I think we went from eighteen, I'd have to go back and look, but it wasn't very much. We did a little rate increase last year on the base rate and a little bit on the tiers, like three to five percent on your higher tiers.
The issue is that a lot of places, and we're not immune to it either, is, you know, even if you did a substantial one, if the compounded annual growth rate was only, you know, a quarter percent, then that's where you have the impact. And so, if we, it's got to be consistent. So, as we look at the scenarios, you know, going into this next, it's not just a kind of one-time thing. This is a starting point that where you want to get guidance from council on. And then we want to say, here's what this looks like over the next five years, whether that's increasing base rates, tiered rates, and finding that balance of both. whether that's increasing base rates, tiered rates, and, and finding that balance of both so we can try to cover the cost of our system, you know, to at least ninety percent, a hundred percent, whatever that would be.
And doing a long-term plan also lets the citizens know, you know, this is what, thinking this is what's coming and just being transparent about, you know, this is something that we planned for and we, you know, there's data to back it and it's been thought through and not just constantly changing. We don't know what it's going to change to.
Well, we want to try to keep the, the low end reasonably cheap, but, you know, we're pretty awful going cheap now.
And that's a point I would, you know, bring up in conversations with people is, because water is becoming more and more popular to talk about. So you're doing your part. If you're, you know, if we have to make a rate increase, it's, all of us are affected by that. And it's just part of being on the team of conserving water or paying for the water. And I, I think we don't talk about that enough sometimes. We're always worried about, what are you doing with our water? Well, here's what we're trying to do to, you know, keep the waters flowing.
Point is, we encourage conservation, that irrigation number is going to go down. So regardless of whether we charge a really high rate on that end, if we're really encouraging conservation, we're not using it anyway. And if we're not using it, we can't put that into a budget model.
It'll make more sense in the scenarios. So that's, that's next. That's literally.
I was looking at scenario.
Yeah, so the next, the next two really go into the five thousand, ten thousand.
You skipped a minute.
I read it earlier.
In twenty, in twenty thousand, but really, really those, those charts right there just show what the consumption would be at, you know, five, ten, and twenty thousand. And now this goes into, I mean, I think everybody's, you know, eye-opening kind of point is, this is where the scenarios come into play and kind of our initial thoughts. And then this is really where we want absolutely all's feedback and point us in the direction that we can start going and, and build these models out for you all.
You're making a lesson. Rest of the class would have.
I, no, I think everyone knows y'all really do. Earlier.
And we have shown these comparisons for the last three or four years, but, you know, we just wanted to get them updated by someone outside of our office just to confirm, you know.
Right.
Okay, so we are showing three scenarios here and they will reflect the revenue gain. And then what we can do with that, looking for sustainability, long-term, what we can set aside for asset replacement, capital improvement projects, future planning stuff. So let's jump into it. Okay, so this is rate scenario one, and we would like to say this is the, the most aggressive model we have to show y'all today. And so what this model would do would increase both the water and sewer base rates because we are trying to build that up a little bit more. So on the water side, you're looking at a four dollar eighty-four cent increase on the residential bill. And then on the sewer would be a four dollar fifty-four cent increase. So looking at the square box to the right, that is what the typical customer would see, the change in their billing each month. So the blue highlighted, we took for the comparison on what New Gen looked at. We did a fifty-eight hundred gallon user and then a five thousand gallon user because that's what our city of Curville average user is. But they're looking at eleven dollars a month change on their, their monthly bill. And that does equate to approximately a hundred and thirty-seven dollars a year if we go with these, these rate structures. Now, each of these tiers on the water and sewer, they do have an increase on them. And we have affected more the six thousand and one-plus user. So they, the highest tier there, fifty thousand gallons and up, had the highest jump on per thousand gallons that they would use. So overall, if we took all of the accounts we have and, and all the consumption that we are building our model on, this would produce approximately sixteen million eight hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars for us for the year. Right now, with our current budget, we have that set in with expenditures at sixteen point three eight six. So that provides us a surplus of approximately four hundred and forty thousand dollars. So we can look at possibly future planning and increasing our asset transfers or our capital improvement project transfers for the long-term needs that come up.
So on the water and sewer combined rates?
Yes, sir.
The lowest, the lowest tier, the one thousand gallon rate?
They would see that nine dollars and thirty-eight cents.
That's twenty-five percent.
Right. On the, because they're only paying the base rate. So we have.
That's really twenty-five percent rate.
Right.
And the people paying this are not, okay, this is the widows. This is the single people living by themselves. And it's nine dollars and thirty-eight cents, but it's also twenty-five percent increase.
Right.
You are aware, you are aware of the optics of that.
Oh, we are. And that's why percentages can be.
And this is your most aggressive.
This is the most aggressive one. And percentages can be scary. And that's why we put the dollars in there as well.
And that's why I did this, percentages.
A hundred percent.
Because math's still, it's still math.
So we had the percentages, of course, on your adjustment there on the left at the scenario. And then at the base rate, the reason it is the twenty-five percent is because of the water.
Sorry. So to your point, Mayor, yes, we know, that's why we wanted to do the most aggressive first because this would, we would consider this and why we didn't want to convolute things with a five-year forecast of seventeen different models, we didn't want to overwhelm it. This was the step one. So we, we knew, we know that optics are a huge thing. We know the impact that it could potentially have, both from revenue and from the optic standpoint. So really consider these three scenarios, aggressive to least aggressive. This would be the starting point that we would then build out another three to five-year model of, of increases, whether that's base rate, whether that's tiered rate. We didn't want to touch the low-tier rates, you know, this time because we knew that that was going to actually have the, the largest impact on, you know, the widows and, and families. So that's why we stuck with just the base rates. And then as we get the guidance from y'all on this and we figure out where y'all are comfortable with on the optic side, we would then build out that three to five-year.
I have to throw two final points. We, I respect the fact that finance department and city management are providing us with these scenarios. And I appreciate the thought this moment, the modeling and the rate scenarios. But we five have different bosses than you. We have like twenty-four thousand bosses.
Yes, sir.
And.
Not very many of them vote.
But they all have an opinion. And all stop being HEB, I tell you.
Yes, sir.
Anyway, so I'm trying to say I understand and respect your point of view, but please understand and respect our point of view.
Of course. And that's why we wanted to start.
And, and, and really, to simplify that enough, kind of, you know, we've talked before, I've talked to each one of y'all about it. We're here just to provide the good, the bad, and the ugly. And it is council's purview based off of what, what has to go. We want to provide what that, you know, looks like. And this just sets the foundation for realistic expectations going forward. We understand that there's tough decisions in there. We just want to provide the good, the bad, and the ugly.
So we got one more question about that. What were, what was the base rate five years ago, seven years ago? How do we, if we dollar adjust that, where would it be?
As Brenda describes it, it wasn't very much different.
Not for me.
So, I mean, you know, we can't go along and be way less than inflation year after year after year. And twenty-five percent sounds like that now, but if we look how much has gone up in the last five to ten years, well, then we may not be near enough to make up for what inflation.
I think that's a good point. And if you look at our costs that we're seeing too on our side, from buying new pipe to electrical costs, to gas prices, to employee costs.
Just construction.
It's just the cost of living is going up. To your point.
Right.
And we have, we, we need a step instead of, we haven't done it.
I don't disagree with what Joe's saying, and I think we could do something about the bottom tiers, maybe. But I, I'm not so sure twenty-five percent is enough.
So to be completely transparent, on the actual tiers, so we do build on a conservation schedule. So these actual tiers that are affected in this scenario and all three scenarios, the six thousand to fifteen gallons is a one percent increase on their consumption. Fifteen thousand.
The one percent.
These are on the highest utilizers.
A one percent increase on their tiered rate. So right now, they're paying four dollars and seventy cents. It'll go up to four dollars and seventy-four cents for the customers falling between sixteen and fifteen.
That's unacceptable.
That's not there enough.
And, and again, the, the, we, we, we just wanted to provide a starting point for you.
Right.
We, that's it. That was, we wanted to.
We got one, three, five, and ten percent. Those higher end users will get a ten percent increase.
Well, anyway, so I think both of, all these things come into play. And we don't want to summarize, you know, the people that are trying to get by month to month.
Right.
On the one hand, but on the other hand, they've gotten by so cheap so long, we just can't always, you know, at some point, it's got to be a little bit of catch-up.
Well, and in scenario one, are we only capitalizing on more, like four hundred and forty thousand, is it? In other words, that's our surplus?
And that would not factor in the irrigation piece. Because remember, we're trying to kind of get off that variable cost and focus on the fixed costs.
And the other ones are like half that.
Correct.
Yeah, even the, even on this water and sewer combined race scenario one, people paying on the fifty-eight hundred tier, they're only going on fourteen point nine percent.
In twenty sixteen, your base rate was seventeen dollars and fifteen cents, if that helps you. So it's two dollars difference right now, today. It's nineteen thirty-six today.
I'm sorry, so it was seventeen?
Seventeen dollars and fifteen cents.
And fifteen?
Yes.
So, yeah, the compounded annual growth rate is.
That did not include a thousand gallons of water. That was just the base rate. And now it does give you a thousand gallons of water and it's two dollars more than that.
And so, and so, you know, the other side of the optics too on the mayor, mayor, and some of the things, again, this is where it gets complicated and we don't want to overwhelm it. What is our standard base rate amount cost? Or like, what's the gallons that, that are part of the base rate?
Thousand gallons.
A thousand gallons. So to the point of those fixed users, you could, and that's why we didn't want to touch the tiers. We can show what that model would look like. We could increase that to two thousand. You know, there are certain things within that base rate that we can fluctuate on if, if we needed to. So.
Seventeen, what?
Seventeen in twenty sixteen, it was seventeen dollars and fifteen cents.
Sixteen, seventeen, sixteen.
Can we touch on a point of this case?
Yes.
On the water and sewer combined rate scenario one, the one thousand gallon tier, so twenty-five percent increase. The fifty-eight hundred gallon tier is only thirteen point nine percent.
Their, their base rate is still going up the twenty-five percent. So if they're using less water.
Either twenty-five percent or just under fourteen percent. Based upon your chart.
Yes. But it's, yeah, it's combined, water and sewer, so. But they're still getting the twenty, their base rate is still increasing at the same rate. But they, what you use in water then, you know, is obviously charged less.
You know, walking up to average water user and saying, oh, no, you don't understand. Yes, you're building one up, but it, your base rate's the same. And they're not going to, they're not going to listen to my second paragraph.
Every day, we have the same conversation. And, and we know, and that's why when I say things like, you know, our first consideration is, how is this going to impact? And so we try to do that.
And I respect that. I'm not trying to be critical of that.
Oh, no.
I'm also trying to represent people who are not in this world.
Of course, of course. You know, we fully understand that.
If we, maybe we can give a comparison to CPI versus what our, how fast our rates are growing so we can say we're in line with, so. At the end of the day, nobody wants to hear the rates going up. But if you can give them some justification and say, it's just the industry standing all the way across. Not just the industry, just, just economics in general.
That's what our insurance agents do.
The price spread went up too, you know, everything.
So Mr. McKinney is the gas pedal and I'm the brake pedal right there.
Yeah, so seventeen sixteen is, in two thousand sixteen is twenty-two forty-six. So we're pretty close to just staying even.
About a twelve percent increase on the base rate since twenty sixteen.
So we're responsible between sixteen, we're responsible for this.
And that's one of our points all the time, too. We can't, I can't go back and say, what is we using?
I could be held responsible for the nineteen ninety to nineteen ninety-four, right?
Let me go pull those.
And this, and this, you know, this is where, you know, to the point of, you know, of council and the workshop, I'd say this is probably the most important part of the workshop where the feedback and discussions from council comes into play.
I appreciate a workshop in which we can discuss.
Absolutely.
Sometimes on the dais, whenever things.
Right.
I feel like an air traffic controller up there. We don't have as much discussion. And this is a time to say, wait, what?
And that's, and to the point, and, you know, so this is where, this is where the business side meets the optic side. And, you know, every, every city we've been in, we're, we're not immune to this. When you look at like, oh my God, it's a hundred percent increase, but when you broke down the compounded annual growth over fifty years, it really was less than inflation each year. And so that's where really for us is we're providing the information for, for consistency. This is the starting point, like I said.
I believe our production costs are actually growing. Inflation, inflation rate to the CPI, but those membranes alone were a fortune. And how long do we have to order them in advance just to get them? So everything, everything in producing water, when you turn on that tap, everything to get that drop of water out of your sink, out of your faucet has gone up. And I believe faster than the rate of replacement.
And it also where some of the Band-Aid getting ripped off on this on the administrative side is that balance between us slowly pulling off of that irrigation, you know, reliance on covering just the, the cost of doing business, you know, plus adjusting for everything that's happened over the past.
Don't be, don't be confused. I will not be, I will not be afraid to face criticism for any decision that we five make together.
I'm going to say it's Joe's fault.
Everyone in town will say that. But what I will say, what I want to do is I'm going to take that heat. I need to understand exactly why.
Yes. Well, what, I mean, basically what's happening is we increase the, I mean, decrease the reliance on irrigation.
Correct.
Those dollars aren't there.
I think the other, I think the other harsh reality is, is we, we, as a city, we'll just say, as a city, we have not factored in the consistent inflationary growth over time.
Because we're right on line with inflation from sixteen to now.
I'll tell you the truth, the big, we'll get complaints on any rate increase. But we'll get bigger complaints if we don't have a system that provides water. You turn on the faucet and nothing comes out.
Right.
Well, the number one topic to talking to people is water, 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 water. And they want to be sure we have the water.
There's a cost associated with that.
There's a cost to that. And we are very cheap compared to other cities. And so we got lots of reason to say, hey, you know, if you want to continue and we're going to need more water, we're going to have to drill wells, we're going to have to spend, there's going to be infrastructure costs. So we can't sit here and then, then they'll bet you if we don't, haven't been setting aside some money, we went out and borrowed the money to do it. And so, not that, I don't think we should borrow the money, I'm just saying. But, but we need to start setting aside some money.
Agreed.
And pay for at least part of.
It's one of those things where we're damned if you do and damned if you don't. Because if we are all of a sudden in a situation where we are unprepared and haven't planned, then we get condemned for that.
Happy to next counter.
Kent somebody the other day said, I wish they had thought of this thirty years. I go, hold on.
So y'all are also one of the only utilities, and this is every city in Texas and everywhere in the country, that all of the utilities are nameless, faceless organizations. Your gas, your phone, your cable, all those things, and those rates change. And you almost don't think of it because they have nowhere to go with it. You all are the one place for this utility.
We're not responsible for those.
But I'm saying the cost of doing business for those organizations change based on the needs of the organization. And it's, it's, I know it's hard for y'all because we got to see the, your.
The reason how about, we have to have our story.
Yeah, we should be helping us too.
See Kent.
You know, inflation's caught up this much and we're only, we're, this is only
and this.
Taking this back to where we were in two thousand sixteen or whatever we can do.
Yeah, and this is, and this is really, really where, you know, to the point with the mayor said about the discussion, this is where we want y'all to help us, you know, with the story. You know, is the story there? What, what do y'all want the story to be so we can help, you know, with that narrative? Put the data behind it, show, you know, what it is. That's, that's what we really want to help.
You get a banner, you know, like they do.
We can do it. We can, whatever y'all want.
Your water rates are going to go up a little bit for the benefit of all.
But the widows aren't going to be able to have a future.
Oh, no, no. It has to, they'll talk about those.
Well, and that's fine. And I think we want to be sensitive to that. But, but I don't think, maybe we don't do the twenty-five percent on the, on the base. I, I, to me, that, that, that seems very reasonable. But, and, but if we cut, well, you cut a little bit off the bottom, where we really got to get is that over the average. Really, those people need to be paying.
And that, and that was, we're, you know, talking with Julie and her team where we wanted to, to adjust or go, you know, provide a scenario without being overwhelming. What would it have been if we said, let's not go up on the base rate or only go up five or ten percent, but increase the tiered rates? Well, that has a much larger negative optic on those low utilizers, which is what we wanted to alleviate. You know, we want, at least in the first year, we wanted to say, hey, if we wanted to do that, let's not do it the first year.
Low users have first thousand gallons for.
Correct. And, and that's something where we can adjust too. We can say, hey, we, you know, maybe, you know, to Ken's, you know, Ken's point, let's go up higher. And, but let's increase that first...
That first tier of free...
First, first tier, yeah, covered, cover stuff. So we can, we can definitely look at that.
There's all kinds of ways.
There's all kinds of ways, and it gets very overwhelming very quickly. And so this was the starting point for y'all on...
You know, that first water bill that goes out, if they could have a really good explanation, like, when we get our increase in insurance, we just get a bill. And we just sit down and wait, and it went up four hundred percent.
Yeah.
It would be nice, maybe we could do that. Plus, we've done stories in various papers and online to talk, to say what we've been saying here to them, and that'll help us all. And then, you know, I've started making little cards on the water that I just take with me, and in case I forget, I can pull it down and say, well, we have five sources of water, you know, or whatever the question was. And, and those are all tools. And I, and I say the banner because, okay, would the papers be the place to put it, or would it online be the place to put it? A little bit of everything.
We, we, when it comes to transparency, we try to hit every source, from community engagement, which, you know, I'm big on, getting out in the community, having information out, y'all having, you know, like, card, I mean, we, anywhere and everywhere, we try to cover the basis of, you know...
This might be a time to really make sure we do that.
We're talking about having water supposedly, and they're being kind of tied in. And this water group that's coming up, and they, they want to do one this fall.
Yes, and they typically do. So yeah, so, so all of these things, we can talk, tell that story. You know, and the question is, is the story there? We think it is, but that's, that's really, council is the direction that we want. Are we on the right track? What do y'all kind of want to see?
Well, I think to Kent's point, I think Kent's point, people are saying, well, we need to, we need to secure more water for our community. Well, you can't do that for free.
Yep.
It has an expense.
Right.
We can justify rates and, and, and base charges to say, our council at our retreat said, water, water, water is important. And if we can, say, these increases are gonna help us fine. Operate the system efficiently, economically, but also help us try to, to secure water. I think that's a, that's acceptable. If it's just...
It's a big, but, yeah, but I think that's right. And they're all asking for it.
Yeah, and, and the others, you know, kind of with the theme of, of the budget, but let's say more realistically, quantifying it all. We, we're running a really lean budget, you know, and I think that, the point of sustainability and us showing the true numbers, you know, because, you know, people always say, well, we're not putting money aside. Well, you know, I can't necessarily disagree with that at a point. You know, we're, we're picking up, you know, from the past, focusing on the future, not neglecting it, and building in sustainability. And so there's a Band-Aid that's gotta get ripped off. And, you know, our budget, I, I could see the optics would be even worse if we're requesting, you know, twenty, thirty people, we're trying to do all of this, not building sustainability, and then, oh, by the way, we're raising rates. No, we're, we are trying to run a very lean, very conservative budget, because we understand those optics. We want to build in that sustainability, and that's, that's part of that message as well.
And with the water, you've got efficiencies there. I mean, our, our base rates compared.
And don't take these comments as any disrespect for any part of the...
Absolutely not.
We're just making out loud, right?
Yeah, no, we're, and, no, we don't, we don't, we absolutely don't take it as disrespect or criticism. We, because again, we want to help tell that story. We're in this together, this is a team, you know, through and through. And so we want to make sure that all sides of it, not just on the water side, but on the public safety, on the general fund, everything that we're doing, we want to make sure that y'all have that story to tell that, that justifies and rationalizes, you know, what, what we're doing.
I think three of us recently during the campaign said, we want to be sustainable on water. And to do that, we have to pay, we have to pay for those.
I mean, since water is, seems to be the main focus, and has been for a while. And you can continue to focus on that, but, but they need to understand the cost associated with...
And how she's figuring it in.
Yeah, yeah.
We're, we're in competition with all of the developments that are going on. You've heard of all the developments out in the county, they're all needing water too. And so it's not like it's gonna get any cheaper than it is today. And so the more you can lock up, really, the better you're going to be long term. But all that comes with a cost.
Really, if you have to talk about how the rates are outside the city limit, we'll know.
They're significantly higher for like, I think, Aqua Texas, last time I heard, there were sixty dollars basically a month for their base charge. Their base charge, no consumption, and we're at nineteen. And they own more water connections in the city than any other, or excuse me, or in the county than any other water purveyor, so... Yes, thirty percent of what they charge.
I'm sorry to have, Brenda, you, you will have it get sued, just people.
Um, I've made arrangements.
Okay.
From that very scene.
From that, from the scene?
Boy, there's efficiency.
All multitasking.
Oh, I knew that.
All right.
So the main thing really to point out in all three of these rate scenarios, and we can definitely talk through them, is the difference in the surplus, in what you want to do as far as the future.
The surplus, excuse me?
The third scenario, they're twenty-five, twenty, and fifteen.
Uh, yes, rate scenario two would be a twenty-two percent base increase. That typical cost, the average tester will see still close to a ten dollar, eleven dollar change on their bill. And that would provide us two hundred thousand dollars extra in surplus for the year end, over expenditures that we need to operate the system.
Sorry to ask again, but the asset replacement transfer would only be for assets within the water system, correct?
That's correct.
And the CIP transfer would be only for improvement projects within the water system.
Right, and typically those transfers would be like an designated line for those projects, set aside.
The very simplified bottom line on one, two, and three, with one, we have an increase of four twenty-five thousand. On two, we have an increase of two hundred thousand. And in scenario three, we have an increase of zero for both asset replacement transfers and CIP transfers. Is that correct?
Right.
Correct.
And then how that affects all three of them side by side on the preliminary revenues is on the chart after those three scenarios, and what that would be on fifty-eight-hundred.
Thanks for taking your time with us, we are volunteers.
That CIP number is the, is the money that we would use to go after new water, or fund projects, whatever council, we would bring that to y'all, y'all get to decide what you use it as. That is the, that's the dealt, that's what's left over for us to do projects with.
Well, and if the goal is sustainability, how well does that number work in scenario three?
It even went up fifty thousand this year, did it?
No, it actually went down.
Okay, down a little bit.
We have all the large projects going on right now.
Okay.
And so we, you know, even if we moved money over there, it would be for future for sure, because they have so many projects going on right now.
We had that big workshop about the need to...
Yeah.
I would think it'd be good to build around first scenario, tweak some things maybe, but still shoot for having the four twenty-five.
Yeah.
Because we're gonna need that.
So we'll, we'll...
I kind of agree with it too. I mean, I, I thought second about it when I was listening to what you were saying, but the truth is, it's in your own household as well. When you have to repair the roof or whatever you have to do, you just have to do it.
Well, I think you're seeing some consensus for rate scenario not alone, but with some tweaks such as...
Well, if we, you wanna see the rate rates up top, cheaper?
Yeah, the tier rates.
No, 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 not that, not that.
Well, I know, and I think Derek made the comment, we can't really do the tiered too much, because they, that's a problem we can't count on anyway, so...
That's right.
Yeah, I mean, the higher tier ones, we can pretty much make it to where, because it's not irrigation necessarily, or it could be, you know, for those that are not on an irrigation meter. So we can absolutely tweak that. But to the, to the mayor's point on, on the scenarios, the tweaks that we would make would be, we'll start with the twenty-five percent, and then we would say, what would this be at over five years? How would this look?
Another tweak that might be something to consider would be the base rate including more gallons. One thousand gallons, a good, two hundred gallons, or two thousand gallons, and then the, the tiers.
I like the goal of having the four twenty-five.
Okay.
I mean, I think...
I agree.
You know, we don't want to step on the toes of widows, even if it's inflationary break even eight years ago.
Can I just have widows, because that's what we're gonna reach?
So the, the other, the other, the other thing...
I'm sympathetic to that.
No, and the other thing too, and it's, doesn't directly impact the water, this is more the general fund side, but something to consider in, in all of our rates and all of our taxes and everything, thirty-three percent of our tax base is frozen. So when you look at, you know, those over sixty-five, the widows, that is a huge benefit that they get, that does have to get put somewhere. And so that is something to consider, you know, in that, in that as well, you know, from a very, from an optics standpoint.
Or you just buy some of that cheap water in Brexburg and pipe it over.
We need to maybe pipe it from somewhere.
And charge, and charge them our rates.
There you go.
So one of the other things to factor in the discussion with the community is always, you know, if this extra money that will be excess at the end of the year, it, it will never be as a pay-as-you-go system all the way. There will always be debt for a city. But every bit that goes towards us helps lessen that debt, which helps lessen the interest, and it makes that project...
We asked about water revenue bonds recently.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and, and the surplus too, you know, Julie and I, and Julie's team have talked about, you know, as we build the sustainability in this year, you know, wind debt does have to come back out. You know, bringing out and going for another, you know, credit, you know, rating, you know, adjustment. We have a great credit rating, but we do feel that there's some room in there where we potentially could, with surplus, with cash, you know, with sustainability, you can now ideally increase it a little bit. And that's one of our, one of our goals that we're trying to shoot for, would be a better credit rating, which would lower debt cost.
While we're talking about water, since we just approved this project that will or will not happen, but I assume it will, and it will take more water out of our system. I've had people ask me, why did you keep approving new growth and growth and growth? And are we gonna end up paying for that as someone that's been here already? And, and I wouldn't mix these two issues together, because one thing is, they're separate, that a rate increase is long overdue, just to pay for what we got. But as we grow, you know, the question's always been, should we just stop for a while? I mean, because we're gonna, you know, we're gonna need more water, we're gonna need more water.
I don't, I, I'm getting the same criticism.
Yeah.
But I got the same criticism in nineteen ninety-two.
Okay.
So they want to show, shut the gate. I'm here now, why do you have to keep growing? And this is nineteen ninety-two, they're telling us.
I'm just talking about water though.
I've never seen that hospital then and now.
Correct.
For example, and who doesn't want better healthcare?
Correct, and I, I, National Magazine came out that Kerrville was one of the greatest places to retire in America, and I got calls saying, what the hell are y'all doing? Why are you telling people about Kerrville? So, uh, growth is gonna happen.
I know, and I agree with that.
I'm getting the same, I'm getting the same.
But, you know, I too have never been for stopping growth, but I am starting to wonder if we should slowly apply, or just introduce caution.
So there's, there's a couple of ways that we can address that, right? There's, there's properties that are zoned for and billed and need nothing from the city and don't ask for anything, and those folks are allowed by law to do what they want.
That's true.
Not, not, none of us can do anything about that.
Right.
There are folks who are gonna come in, and they're gonna wanna try to fill that delta somewhere, like you had last time, right? And I think on case-by-case basis is, you know, obviously you all have to weigh the pros and cons of all these things, right? So we have workforce issues, and we have water issues. You know, the ways that we could work on water are in that hundred-year water plan. I mean, that's really a lot of that discussion, conservation measures that have been put in place is the biggest ticket, us working on new, new areas for water. I think we have to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time, and I don't, we have to find, Stuart Kounias can find a much better way of saying that for y'all, get some good talking points for it, and Dalton can too, but it's, it's a balance of all those things.
I think the fear of additional development is not the development, it's the fear, there's anxiety about water availability. Sure. And people, we have a huge reservoir called ASR Wells, but you can't see the water.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not like going, oh, there's a big lake.
Right.
But I think a lot of it is just anxiety about water, and I think a drought exacerbates that. Because if you've lived here a longer enough time, hey, we have droughts, and then we have red meters. And right now, we're in a drought, and some of the newer people in town are going, you know, the sky is... The river has stopped running, and it's about the first time I've seen it.
Well, and we need, we need other things, we need housing, we need, so we can't stop some of those things.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying, those people are talking to me too, but...
And that's really where, you know, to the, you know, point of, you know, what Kent was saying about data inefficiency, you know, we are an ecosystem. You know, Kerrville is a very unique ecosystem, we can't rely on others, you know, we, we balance it, and council has done a great job over the years, and we're now continuously communicating that on, why do we have studies? Why do we have plans? You know, what's our housing stuff doing? And based off of this information, we're not doing them just for the sake of doing them, we bring that information to light so council can then make those informed decisions. Should a moratorium be put on, on housing, or put on businesses or something? As we get that information to y'all, then y'all can put those, y'all can make those difficult decisions as they arise.
But they see Lennar, and they see these apartments that make, oh, my god, don't so much, but it's still a small percentage. It's not like we're going ten percent a year or something, it's crazy.
We're not, we're not in problems.
Right, and, but you're right, they see the flow of the river going, you know, or there's no flow at the dam at Nemets.
I have a screen that has a, 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 an image of water in the dam that's not, just rolling out when there's a drought.
So, but that's a hell of a big reservoir for us to use too. And do we have to dredge that out at some point, or is it not filled up with silt? Has it done that before?
I think it's easy to say too, that we don't want to grow for the sake of growth, we want quality growth. And that's what all of our rules and regulations are in there for, and that's what we look at when a development comes along, is this something that is gonna be a benefit to our city? We're not growing just to grow because we, we want to get, we want to be San Antonio, no. We're growing because we don't want to be dying. You're either dying or you're growing.
Exactly.
And so you gotta decide what side of the coin you want to be on. If you want to be, oh, one of those towns is dying, go a little further west, there's plenty of them out there, so...
It's great to spend.
All right, who's, where's our next slide, preliminary revenues?
That last slide was just reflecting that all three scenarios where we would jump up to the fifth one in line, for all three scenarios on our, our overall bill.
Can we put water on the water bill as a other thing? Questions, call Kent.
I'll talk to him.
We can put a bill in service for that. So kind of the last thing before we jump into, okay, kind of to some of the points you made, we do have some resources that we work with customers on a regular basis, who do need help with their, their utility bills. That's something Dalton and I have been talking about, different ways to build out, you know, different resources, maybe that we don't have already, and those kind of things. So that might be more futuristically, but we do have avenues right now, that we work with people every day on, you know, these resources for you. And, and our neighborhood assistance money that we collect at the city goes directly to CAM, for use for distribution directly to water and sewer, so we have that.
So we don't administer that?
We do not administer that, and we have an agreement with CAM to administer that.
I have sent many people there, St. Vincent Falls too, and it goes best.
It does, and they...
And that's a very valid point, thank you, Julie. You know, that's another thing that's not directly tied to these, but as the surplus kind of increases, those are things that you can contribute more to that program for those widows, for those... So that's another positive.
Add the track of CIP.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, I'm gonna just hit asset replacement really quick, this kind of layout looks exactly the same as you would see on the general fund. So just kind of starting at the top, you know, putting in some dollars again this year for aging meter, meters and infrastructure. Our current metering infrastructure was put in in twenty twelve?
Twenty ten.
Twenty ten, and so most of that is warranted out. And so we're having to physically replace more and more meters, other than send in the back for warranty, which we've usually done. And that's what we did this year in this year's budget as well. But again, to someone's point a while ago about supply, we ordered this, these, this metering infrastructure last year when the budget was approved, and we don't have it yet. So that's kind of the wait time right now on infrastructure, which creates a whole other set of issues.
Carry forward, correct?
Yes, of course, and that's why, another reason we put this in a separate fund, for that reason. So then just kind of looking forward, as far as twenty-five proposed purchases, there's the infrastructure there, replacing one vehicle utility billing. The water production items highlighted in green there have to do with filtration at the water plant, and I'm sorry, I'm not versed enough to talk about that, but those are new additions to the system that are being requested. So if you want more information on that, we can definitely get it, but it's basically expanding the filtration part of the plant.
Y'all want more on it?
Okay.
Okay.
Then some vehicles under there, and you can see we're replacing a two thousand five dump truck, that is the oldest vehicle that we're replacing. So as I said, we, we're making progress, and last year we had some, I think, two thousand one, two thousand twos. So we are making progress on the age of our infrastructure slowly, so, or the age of our, our assets. So total proposed expenditures for twenty-five, seven hundred eighty-two thousand, right at that. And with that five hundred thousand dollar contribution would leave us about seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars in fund balance for emergencies, or just for building for the future, as we have bigger expenses that come. as we have bigger expenses that come. And here's our favorite slide, of course. This by color gives you a breakdown of each debt issuance that's paid for out of the water fund. So it shows you over time, the different dollars allocated to each of those debt funds or those debt service pieces. And then you can see a pretty extreme drop off there after, you know, 2029, and then more as we go along. So that's just back to the conversation we had last March about capacity and how that looks moving out into the future. You know, hopefully we can, you know, cash fund some things moving into the future, but it just shows you what we will have capacity for moving on. Okay, I'm going to let Jacob give you a quick on occupancy tax because he's done our small fund work for us. And not every small fund that we have is included in this presentation because we'd be here forever. And a lot of them are really immaterial because they're, either don't have substantial revenue or no revenue that you know of, and so we adjust those as we go, so.
Okay, so I'll jump into hot. Most of what you'll see on this page is in your monthly financial report that Julie provides. So our occupancy tax proposed is at 6.1 million, or 6.7, sorry. That's 2% less than FY 2024 budget. And we're monitoring that very closely month to month. Keep in mind that our HOT revenues are received a month prior to,
a month after, sorry, collections.
So a lot of the proposed expenditures, we looked at this year and we kind of said, can y'all keep it flat with revenues in mind? So CBB, we kept flat and asked them to do so. Committed caps funding, that's year two out of that three-year project. Arcadia Live, Fourth on the River, and Museum of Western Art, same thing, keeping flat. And then that transportation project is a new ask in ACOG, 200,000.
What is the transportation project? Under care?
Dalton?
So Mayor Eichner, last, prior to the election, we had met with Alamo ACOG and the Alamo Regional Transit System. And ideally, tentatively through a letter of intent partnered with the, the county with Judge Kelly and them. And basically we're exploring a grant funding option on what a public transit system would look like on demand or, or something. And so the matches would be 400,000, 200 from the county, 200 from the city. So we wanted to go ahead and just lock it in and set it aside. It's not restricted. The council still, excuse me, has to approve that. It's still in its early stages, but we just wanted to set it aside as that program potentially develops or doesn't develop.
There was a workshop before you.
Oh, okay.
That I don't know.
Before you were tagged?
Yeah, that, that's just the high end of it. I haven't spoke with the judge about that yet or not.
County put it in their budget.
That, that really just an earmark, just so we had it in there for full transparency, you know, on that, but still in its infancy stages.
And will I have more discussion on that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I just asked Julie about the Fourth on the River, 50,000. So she's going to invite them to do a recap of the fourth and how it went. Because I'm still curious to know how we're going to spend, how they spent the 50,000. So.
Invite them. Inviting who?
Arcadia Live, basically, I guess, is who would come and do a recap. You know, I'd like to begin with the eclipse and everything else, tendence and, you know, revenues and expenditures.
And give us that geo-vening stuff too to tell you where best visitors came from.
Right, right.
That's all things we look at in the post-report.
Excellent.
And then to continue on, the HHHC project, which is a reallocation of a million dollars. And then that brings our total proposed expenditures to 2.94 million. Okay, going forward into the garage fund, so a little bit about the garage fund that y'all don't know.
So we got some funds to start with.
Yes, that million dollars was back in 2021, I think, or 2022 when we first did that. That was anticipated to reduce fund balance. We were going to use fund balance out of the HOT fund for that. So we've got about $3 million in fund balance. Don't want to quote me on that exactly. But we still had, you know, over a million after that reduction, but I'll, I'll go back and get, you'll have that fund balance for sure tied up in the.
Talking about River Fest.
Yes, and Ashley has the.
So this is not. Did say how much the fund balance was, so I figured there must be some fund balance.
Yeah, sorry about that. And that will be in the budget in detail. You'll have a starting in the fund balance to show.
So yeah, we'll, we'll put a fund balance.
Yeah, it'll definitely be in there, just like in the same structure that we typically do where you have a starting in your revenue expenditures in the bottom line. A good question on River Fest. So at this point, Parks and Recreation and City Administration have talked, and they're talking about not doing River Fest next year just because of, just not getting the turnouts to support the dollars that we were using from HOT for that. So not to say we won't do that or something different in the future, but certainly up for, up for discussion, but that is not included in this.
Pause. The eclipse. Then we.
For this year, we combined it, but I think the sentiment was last year that the event was not gaining the traction that, you know, and it was the cost of it, so.
Something you had to be prepared for though.
Yeah, no, the eclipse was kind of the one-off and really it was just as talking with the team going forward, really not just the River Fest, you know, what are, you know, looking at the events. You know, we, we provide a lot of great amenities for, you know, for our customers, you know, do we want to continue to that? River Fest was really the one that we're like, hey, I think we've, we really have the council if we want to continue it, but Ashley's here if y'all have any questions on that one.
Need to get the entertainment headliners. We would need to really get the visitors and just lose cost and that's our.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Moving on to the garage.
I'm sorry.
I was just going to add Joe being a guitar.
I have one. Recharge for me to stop playing.
It's a water road consideration. Wild sneakers.
So moving on to garage fund. Garage fund is an internal service fund established to account for the cost of operating and maintaining city-owned vehicles and equipment. So with that being said, there is a citywide contract between general fund, water fund, and a little bit here from double, uh, sorry, development services. And that basically makes up 384,000 to basically balance the garage fund. And you have a little bit of interest revenue in there as well. Proposed expenditures is 308,000 personnel. That includes benefits, training, travel, and all of that. Supplies and materials, 26,000. Maintenance and repairs, 19,000, and services being 31,000. So a total of 384.
So something, sorry, so something to note on the, on the garage fund or the garage in general, with some internal rework, the garage now falls under Public Works. And so they've been kind of, you know, doing some revamp within the garage, you know, and trying to improve some of the services. So they're still kind of diving into it. That was very new. It used to be under the Office of Innovation. And so as we move that out and put it under, under that, Stuart and his team are looking at how to be more efficient in that area. So that is hard to figure out right now, but that is something that they are working on.
Moving on to Library Memorial, FY 2025 proposed revenues is that 1 million dollars from HOT. Interest revenue of 142,000, and then the Friends contribution of 25,000. So a little bit about the Library Memorial is it's not supported by the general fund or water fund. It's primarily a donation-driven fund from outside sources, friends of the library or just other donations made throughout, throughout the city. Moving into FY 2025 proposed expenditures, service on the public library campus is $3,000. Their summer reading program of $4,000, the Parks and Recreation Activity Guide of $5,000. Adult and youth program presenters, 7,000. Window washing and tending, 20,000. Mango languages and some other professional services and subscriptions, 41,000. Some book purchases is 60,000, and then the rest of Library Memorial's HHHC contribution, which is $2 million that's reallocated.
The next one, real quick, is Jag. That one can get a little bit confusing, but basically we have franchise fees from different cable providers and those kind of things. That money has to be used to spend on our public education. Education, so basically our Channel 2 TV pays for that and then anything else that we do specifically related to public, public education. The franchise tax, you can see there is revenue, and then the big thing we have here is a new subscription for, it's a two-year term for basically what is now, we're now using as Granicus. And so this is a two-year term for that, and we do have fund balance to cover that. Y'all have already seen the agreement and so know what that is. So that's in the works, and basically that'll be replacing an expense that we already have in that fund.
I was thinking a Senate agenda.
Yes, yes. Charlie brought that a few weeks back.
What is, what is a civic clerk subscription?
That, you saw that in the agreement a few weeks back. It's like your agenda subscription. It also publicizes the meetings.
It's great, it's great.
Are we, is that, does that include a licensing fee as well?
Well, that is our subscription for it.
That'll be everything.
That's a two-year fee, yes.
And I believe it's a little bit cheaper than Granicus.
Cheaper than we're paying now for Granicus.
It's like 3 miles out, it's cheaper.
Not much, but.
Yeah, but still. It's less than we're paying now, and we are paying out of this fund. It's just we're, there's a two-year for this one because we have better pricing. You know, this report is special revenue, not anything really big there. This is where that vehicle registration, we all pay that extra dollar when we go get our vehicle registered. That money does come back to the city or a portion of that does. It's been pre-average in the 30, 35,000, 38,000 range. That money is then turned back around and used to improve pedestrian areas specifically in school zones or walkable schools. So Trees Department has done a lot of work on upgrades to school zones with that, so that's what we use that for. Here's your development services slide. We've already talked about this a little bit, so we'll go into a whole lot of detail, but you can definitely see the reduction in revenue from this year's budget to next year's budget. And really that's just for all the reasons that we've already discussed. It's just, we just don't know. If it comes back better, then great. We can reduce those transfers or, you know, that can stay as fund balance, but remember when we do financial reporting, this is part of the general fund anyway. We break it out so you can really see what's going on on the development side. It used to be rolled into the general fund as a total and then supported by the funds that it provides services to. The last thing, we talked about this, but we've actually put it on the books as our general facility fund. And I think this is a good follow-up to the presentation that we had at the workshop on Tuesday in setting aside money for future. And really this past couple of years with, you know, as much as inflation has cost us money, you know, it's helped us on the interest side and we've talked about that. But using that interest as a baseline really for establishing this fund for future use and setting that aside to then grow those funds within that fund to set aside money for future facilities, maybe land purchases, anything like that. We did deposit the purchase, the, the sale of the Centipoy property into this fund as well, so there is a little bit of money in there already. But our proposal is to move a million dollars of the interest earned that we talked about, I believe at the last workshop, to this fund as a set aside. So it would be designated strictly for facilities. Yeah, we also, we haven't set one up for water yet, but I think a lot of that will depend on, you know, the direction we go with budget. That we have surplus here or there. We want to start doing a set aside specifically for infrastructure, those kind of things outside of CIP. We could certainly set it up as its own fund, just to be able to see it. Right now, anything is, it's in CIP. We just have an undesignated line that that's where our holdover is, so we need additional funds for projects or anything like that. We can go to that because it's not restricted by bond covenants and those kind of things. The other funds, super short. I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, there's some other small funds that really are immaterial or that there's no hard and fast guarantees on what money comes in, so it has to be dealt with kind of on a case by case basis, but I know water was the big one.
Questions for Julie or her team?
We've recovered.
Yeah. Now, I, I know from personal experience, if you have a question, Ms. Barron is happy to help, try to explain it. Sometimes she's explained stuff to me several times.
I've explained it to myself several times.
What's next? It looks like the next item on the budget timeline will be.
We'll, we'll want to bring those rate scenarios back to you.
For certified primary tax deadlines for the 25th on the, I think I heard consensus on scenario one with.
So what we would like, and it's not on this, is kind of a question for today, you know, the next one we have is, you know, kind of for the August proposed. We would like to consider doing maybe another budget workshop like this the first week of August at a date, you know, say maybe same time at a date available to everybody. To go over any of the changes, we'll have a certified rolls at that point, you know, you know, we, we talked through some general fund things, made some improvements on that. I think I've talked to y'all about some of those, but that would be kind of the all encompassing, what are some of the things that were changed from this budget workshop? Bring the scenarios back.
It'd be the first full week in August, I'll become part of them.
Okay, so we can send, we'll have Shelley send an email out and we can, we can.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's a lot of detail. Thank you for your help.
Of course. These things are always beneficial. I mean, I know it takes time and sometimes they get a little tedious maybe because there's a lot of numbers and a lot of thinking, but I don't, I just don't think we could do what we do without these kinds of settings.
It's very helpful for us.
Yeah.
Because that way we're not guessing, kind of know what you're thinking.
And I get to hear what Kent thinks about and what Joe thinks about. Adds to the entertainment of the whole meeting.
Anything else on this agenda?
No.
All right, are y'all ready for to adjourn?
I don't think so.